I, Janice Savage Martin, President of the Duncanville ISD Board of Trustees, call this meeting of the Duncanville Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of Board of Trustees is present, that the meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Good evening. Our mission at Duncanville ISD is to engage, equip, and empower all scholars to achieve their unique potential. We will now go into closed session. Thank you very much. Okay, we are back from closed session, and we'll continue with our agenda items. The very first thing we're going to do is administer oath of office to our recently elected trustees. Ally? So Jackie and Phil? Yes.
All right. If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of the Board of Trustees. Place, state your place. Of Duncanville ISD. Of the State of Texas. And will do so to the best and will, to the best of my abilities, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the state. So help me God. All right, congratulations.
Thank you both for continuing to serve our students. Next, we'll go to reorganization of the board. Jackie Colton, as the current secretary, has done the work for this, and I'll turn it over to her.
Good evening. I would like to present the current top nominees for officer of the Board of Trustees. For president, we have Mr. Phil McNeely.
I would like to nominate Phil McNeely for president. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Go ahead, Jackie.
Next, for vice president, we have Mrs. Cassandra Phillips.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Mrs. Cassandra Phillips for vice president of our board.
Second.
Oh, yes, thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero.
For secretary, we have Mrs. Carla Fahey.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Ms. Carla Fahey for secretary of our board.
Second. Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. And excuse us a minute while we change seats.
They gotta give me a script. I just wanted to say thank you to the board. I've been doing this a few years now, and this is the best board I've ever served with. I think they put their priorities, the kids, first, and that's a real positive thing. And I look forward to working with them the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please join me as I recognize our outgoing board president. I'll say a few words. There may be other board members who want to say a few words, and then I want to make a presentation of this crystal for Ms. Janice Savage Martin. It says, "In appreciation to Janice Savage Martin for your dedication and service as board president for the 21-22 school year." So in just a moment, we'll go over and take a photo to memorialize this. But let me say, Ms. Janice Savage Martin, we appreciate your leadership. You've done an outstanding job of leading the board through a very, very challenging year, through the pandemic and all the ups and downs that we endure. We can always count on you to keep us all in line, have an orderly, focused meeting, and just provide the leadership that is so important for our team of eight. So thank you so much for your service, and I'll pass it on to other board members who may want to share a word. And then we'll have our photo, and then we'll move on with the remainder of the board meeting.
Anybody got anything to say?
Dr. Smith said it all. Thank you. Thank you for doing such a great job.
Thank you, Janice.
Janice, you did a great job. I'll be calling you.
Janice, I really appreciate your leadership and your kindness and your thoughtfulness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savage Martin. And Mr. President is going to follow in your footsteps, and he's going to conduct it just the way you did.
If y'all could bear with us for a moment so that we can get a photo. Thank you.
I'm going to stand for Janice.
Okay, thank you. Turn it over to Mr. President.
Trustee Cassandra Phillips will lead us in an invocation.
Thank you, Sir President. I'm so used to saying Madam President.
He's been called worse.
Lord, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Lord, please cover and protect every family represented tonight, every DIS Duncanville ISD student, teacher, staff, and family member. We ask that you fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect our entire Duncanville ISD family. Lord, please cover the families of the recent shootings and provide them with your comfort and peace. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand as I lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and entitled to life. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Now, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. You're up, Dr. Smith.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, those that are in attendance, I have the following items that I want to report on this evening. The first item is to report on our superintendent's roundtable. On last month, I met with a group of staff members, a group of parents and community members, and this group makes up what we call our superintendent roundtable. In keeping with our strategic plan, of course, our superintendent goes to make sure that we maintain a connection with our stakeholders. We meet on a quarterly basis. We meet at least three times a year, sometimes more, depending upon the scenario. But we've met three times this year, and it's a really good meeting. It's an opportunity for me to provide a district update. It's also an opportunity for me to hear and get feedback from our stakeholders. And so we talked about a number of different topics. We talked about the district funding. We talked about the budget that's coming up. We talked about the impact of the pandemic, certain accomplishments that we have in the district, and future initiatives that we have coming up. So this group provided valuable feedback for me, and we continue our communication all throughout the year. Even though it may be outside of our standard meeting, I also provide them updates and key information so that I can keep them informed and up to date at all times. So great group to have, good feedback, and a good way for us to maintain good communication and connection with our community members. So one of the updates are there. The second item that I have is just to update you on the Teaching and Learning Center. Last week, on Thursday, May 12th, we officially opened the Teaching and Learning Center. The facility is committed to growing and developing teachers so that they can provide students our best, their best. The ribbon cutting was absolutely outstanding. I want to thank all of those who had a role in putting that together. We were able to highlight some of the key benefits of the building and the facilities and what we're going to be utilizing that for, for our teachers. We also had an opportunity to highlight the work of our partners, Huckabee and Sodalko, who were the builders. And then the biggest fun was to talk about how we finished under budget and how we saved the district around $260,000 something thousand. And a big part of that was the board allowing us to be able to go for this opportunity when you did. Had we gone for it later after the pandemic, the cost would have been so much more, and we wouldn't have been able to open at the time that we have. So certainly want to applaud you. Our curriculum and instruction team will be looking at transitioning, moving in toward the end of this month in the new facility. And so it's going to be a great opportunity for us to provide training and support for our teachers as we move into next school year. The next item that I have for you is the Dallas College graduation. On last Friday, I was very proud, had an opportunity to attend the graduation and participate in the graduation ceremonies for Dallas College. Saw 107 students walk across that stage with their associate's degree or their industry certification. That is just a lot of pride and awesome opportunity for us and to know the impact that this is going to have on our students. Had a great sense of pride. That's two years of college completed just because of the program and the opportunities that we provided for our students. So it's going to give them a huge head start in getting that bachelor's degree. Forty-eight of those students, they received a Level One or Level Two industry certification. And these are college credit hours and certifications that guarantee these students a high-paying job when they get into their specific industry that they've chosen. So again, just another opportunity for us to be able to create our programs and be a bridge for our students to be able to transition beyond their graduation days and from Duncanville High School. Also, the next item that I have for you is just to provide an update on the state track meet. I had an opportunity. Fellow board member Cassandra Phillips also was there this past weekend. And so we had an opportunity to see great performances. Our boys' and girls' track team did exceptionally well. Our girls had a strong performance. The boys, they finished second in team scoring with a total of 60 points. I'll have to fact-check this, but I think I'm going to be right on this, that this is the first time that three different sports from the same school, in the same school year, competed for a state championship. Of course, our track team did. Our football team did. And our boys' basketball team all this year. So we're working to see if we can get the facts on that, but that's a pretty big accomplishment. I am confident in saying it's a very small number. So I'm very confident in saying that, if we're not the only one. But it's just a credit to our coaches and our student athletes. A couple of highlights. We did have a student who won the state championship in the 100 meters. Pierre Goury ran a time of 10:22. The boys' four-by-100-meter relay ran the fastest time at the UIL State Track Meet in 24 years. They ran under 40 seconds and ran a time of 39:98. And that also happens to be the sixth, we happen to be the sixth school in the United States to go under 40 seconds. So just awesome performance by our students and very proud of their commitment to excellence. The last item I have, we're really, really looking forward to this Thursday. We will graduate the class of 2022. Looking forward to it. Will be at Globe Life Field for our third graduation in this venue. And the ceremony begins at 8 o'clock. And so we're really looking forward to celebrating the class of 2022. Turn it back over to Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We'll now move on to recognitions. I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Goodman and T.R. Richard.
Good evening, Sir President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Smith. I'd like to first call up to recognize the Inspiring Leadership Academy, Dr. Goodman and Dr. Nix.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Smith. As you'll see, we have a group of amazing leaders who are joining us at the podium. In alignment with our district strategic goal, personnel and professional development, it gives me great pleasure to present to you the newest cohort completers of our in-district leadership development program, which we refer to as ILA. ILA stands for Inspiring Leaders Academy. ILA includes a fall induction session, monthly in-person meetings, one-on-one coaching, action learning projects, and research of most recent literature, articles, and studies that help develop effective school leaders. The goal is to establish a pipeline to campus leadership for people who are demonstrating leadership potential. It's also designed to have potential campus leaders at the ready when turnover occurs. Three years ago, we created an additional component to ILA, which we called ambassadors. The purpose of the ambassadors is to provide support, encouragement, and mentorship to these ILA members. The ILA, the ambassador's goal in support is to push these ILA ambassadors to reach their full potential. You know, sometimes when things get hard, you can get a little lax. So the ambassador's job is to just encourage them, motivate them, and be there to support them. Also, we just want to let you know that in the past three years, coming from the ILA process and program, we have hired five principals, five assistant principals, three teacher specialists, and three of the district teachers of the year. All have been a part of ILA. So now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Goodman, who will introduce these amazing individuals.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Smith. I am excited to introduce our new ILA completers. And first, Ronisha Bilo, who is the assistant principal at Hastings. Macobia Harris, who is at Kennermore, and she is not here with us this evening. Sheree Johnson from Collegiate Academy. Ayanna Featherston from Kennermore. Antonio Santiago Plaza from Daniel. Tasha Floyd Jones from Kennermore. Katrina McNeil from Reed. Teresa King from Alexander. Callie Meekins from Daniel. And Shelley Sisk, who is not with us this evening, from Hastings. In addition to that, I also want to recognize our ambassadors. As Dr. Nix said, they had a huge role in their, in the participants getting things done, getting their task accomplished, but also providing that support. We really have a serve and support model, and this is an opportunity for them to give back, and they chose to do this. And so we want to recognize them as well. Latonya Dennis, who was actually in our very first cohort of ILA. She is the assistant principal at Fair Meadows. Claude Anthony Childs, who is from Harden, and he is the teacher specialist at Harden. Napoleon Leyva, who is an AP at Duncanville High School. And Jamie Brown, who is our Director of Professional Development. Thank you all so much. We are so excited to see what comes from this group. Thank you.
All right. So to continue recognitions, we will step into our donations that we've received over the past year. So, not the past year, over the past month, excuse me. We've received multiple donations to the Panther Pantry, which is a home and a source that has really grown this year, and we're grateful for the giving that's been provided there. In addition, Pace High School received meals from Mud Hook Bar and Kitchen. They are a great supporter of the district in many, many ways, and we're grateful for their business support. And then lastly, a large donation to the football program from Mr. Adam Butler. So I wanted to make sure that we recognize the donations that have been received over the last month to the school district. And again, every little bit counts, and we're grateful for it. All right. So the final recognition I have for you this evening is to bring before you our district teachers of the year. I'd like to invite up Ms. Jessica Thomas from the Charles Acton Leadership Academy and Ms. Miranda Mays from the STEAM Academy at Kennermore Middle School. So this is a formal introduction to your district teachers of the year. You've already received and learned quite a bit about them at the Employee Appreciation Event, at the videos that we've been posting on social media to really spread the word about our new ambassadors for the district, who will be speaking on behalf, be working very closely with Dr. Smith. So you'll see quite a bit of them. These two young women have been, already hit the ground running. They got their applications started for Region 10 so that they can continue to recognize us there or be recognized in that capacity. In addition, each of them have sort of stories that they've shared in the last week, because it's been a little over a week since they've been named the district teachers of the year. So Ms. Mays said that one of the students that she had kindergarten in another, in another school actually saw her picture on the website, the website banner. And he begged his mom, he's like, "Mom, we've got to go to the school. We've got to go to Kennermore. We've got to go see her. I've got to let her know just the impact she's had on me." That student is a freshman here at Duncanville High School now. And he had his mom take him up to Kennermore on Friday so that he can congratulate her and tell her the impact that she has had on his life. And so that is just a huge accolade and just says a lot about who you are and the giving that you've done and the way that you really impact students. So thank you for that. And she's not alone. Ms. Thomas at Charles Acton Leadership Academy, her students have said that we're going to score the top score in the entire district on all testing because you are the top teacher in the entire district. So they, they know that if you're going to do great things, that they can do great things. And so they are very excited and appreciative of everything you do, and that says a lot about you as a teacher. So thank you both. I look forward to working with you guys. I think the district is going to be, we're definitely behind you 100%, but we're so supportive and grateful for all that you do. So congratulations to our district elementary and district secondary teachers of the year. Thank you.
We'll move on now to communication from citizens to discuss pending board items. The coming before the board, we have one speaker. And forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Mike Hirth. Is that right? And you write about like I do.
Okay, it's not the first time. It's kind of hard to follow all that. But esteemed Board of Trustees and Dr. Smith, my name is Mike Hareth. I am a fifth-grade bilingual teacher at Harden Intermediate School and proud employee of Duncanville ISD. And on behalf of Southwest Dallas AFT members and non-members, it is of the utmost urgency that you consider an appropriate and deserving wage for all Duncanville ISD employees. Many tenured and loyal Panther staff who love working for Duncanville ISD are unfortunately being forced to consider other options for employment for the 2022-2023 school year. Much of this has to do with salary. As a result, 1,608 letters have been sent by district employees to the board asking for an 8% pay raise. Based on a survey completed by Duncanville ISD employees, we know that 81.7% of those surveyed are dependent on a needed pay raise for added financial stability, especially in these turbulent times of inflation due to what is occurring on the world stage. 76% of employees surveyed stated that they did not have a healthy work-life balance. 74% stated that they felt that the district takes them for granted. 56.7% of those surveyed said that they would leave Duncanville ISD if they could get another position. 100% of those surveyed chose pay incentives as one of their top three factors that would cause them to stay instead of leaving to teach in another district. Based on salary comparison charts published by the United Educators Association, Duncanville ISD consistently ranks low in teacher salary when compared with other districts in the DFW metroplex. With a starting salary of $53,000, the ISD ranks number 20 compared to other districts in the eastern metroplex. Our district ranks 19th for salary for teachers with 10 years of experience and 18th for a teacher with 30-plus years of experience, with a maximum teacher salary of only $65,800. Inflation, as well as the stress and increased workload of having taught through a global pandemic, necessitates an 8% raise across the board for all district employees. This is a fair and just measure for the board to implement. Pay is not the only factor affecting job conditions, but it is one, it is an important one. Educators need to be able to afford to take care of their families and pay their bills. In order to be treated as respected professionals, we must be given pay commensurate with our experience and professionalism. The blood, sweat, and tears that we pour into our jobs each and every day to prepare our children for the future must be honored. Educated professionals should not have to work multiple jobs to make ends meet. If Duncanville ISD wants to attract and retain the best and brightest educators, the district needs to up the ante in terms of salary. We know that you, esteemed Board of Trustees, will do the right thing to retain our staff who help our students to grow each and every day. Thank you for your time.
Now we'll move on to consider approval of consent agenda items. All these items may be acted upon at the same time by the Board of Trustees. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I'd like to request that we move Item 9D and 9E up to the consent agenda items.
Second.
We have a motion to move 9D and 9E to the consent agenda. Anybody got any questions? Anybody got any questions? All in favor? Passes six oh. There's a motion about the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we accept approval of the Consent Agenda Items. All in favor? All opposed? Passes six oh. Now we'll move on to consider approval of all, of the Action Agenda Items. I'll turn the, over to you, Dr. Smith.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mr. President, President McNeeley. The first item that we have, I'm going to ask Ms. Kathleen Brown to come up. As she comes up aboard tonight, we're going to be presenting to you the Compensation Plan for the 22-23 school year. We've heard a lot of feedback, made a lot of adjustments since our budget workshop back in April. And so I do appreciate the feedback from staff. I appreciate the feedback from the board. And we believe that we've taken all that in consideration and put together a Compensation Plan that will accomplish our goals and really reward our employees for the commitment that they have in Duncanville ISD and the work that they do. We want to outline that for you today, give you the highlights, but then also dig into the details. And of course, we are prepared to answer any questions that you have. Just logistics, you do have the presentation in front of you so that you can follow along, take notes, and reference any particular pages where you want us to go back if we need to clarify anything. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kathleen Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Smith. It is my pleasure to present to you the 2022-2023 Recommended Compensation Plan this evening. In Duncanville ISD, we pride ourselves on taking care of our employees. Even during the pandemic and everything that has occurred over the past two and a half years, you have continued to demonstrate your level of care, concern, and respect for all staff of the district. In alignment with the strategic plan, Duncanville ISD is committed to being a competitive-paying district in our region. The district has engaged in a comprehensive review of the Employee Compensation Plan to examine the competitive job market and make recommendations for all pay grades, including the teacher hiring schedule, administrative professionals, administrative management, administrative support, instructional support, and auxiliary. Next slide. The Compensation Plan includes the following areas: salaries, benefits, the district's contribution to benefits, position stipends, signing bonuses, as well as loyalty stipends. Next slide. So a few highlights for this evening before we move on to taking a look at some real examples of the Recommended Compensation Plan. Here are a few of the things that we will be looking at this evening. First, a $57,000 beginning teacher salary. A 6.6% salary increase from the midpoint for all teachers. That's, that equates to a $4,000 increase at a minimum. A 4% increase from the midpoint for all other staff members. A $2,000 loyalty stipend for staff members who've been in the district for 15-plus years at the end of the 2021-22 school year. Additional stipends for hard-to-fill positions. Market adjustments for any positions as they apply. And a decrease in health insurance premiums. Next slide. So earlier this year, we shared with you the district's starting teacher pay comparisons for this current school year. This year, the beginning teacher salary in Duncanville ISD is $53,000. Although this is $20,000 above the state minimum salary for teachers, it places us just above three of our comparison districts. It's important for us to remember that the comparison districts we are looking at are not those that are comparable to us in size, but they are districts that we compete with in recruiting personnel. Next slide. With a beginning teacher salary of $57,000, our place within the market, within the comparison district, completely shifts, as you can see on this slide. The salary would place Duncanville ISD in the top quartile for the beginning teacher salary. It is important to note that this is based on the 21-22 teacher hiring schedules, and like us, districts are working to finalize their plans for the upcoming school year. With those that have already made decisions for next year, a few more districts may move, just move to $57,000 or a little bit over the $57,000 mark, but Duncanville ISD would still be in the top half and offer a more competitive salary. Next slide. When looking at beginning teacher salary, the beginning teacher salary of $57,000, this is referring to a teacher who's just started their career as a certified teacher with us without any experience. Our teacher hiring schedule would max out at 30-plus years with a salary of $68,200 with a bachelor's degree and $69,200 with a master's degree up on hire. And this is for people who are coming into the district as a hiring schedule, not those that are already a part of Duncanville ISD. As we look at the next few slides, we will take a look at the impact that the proposed raise percentages would have on staff district-wide. It is also important to note that when the state speaks about the state minimum pay, it refers to a specific group of employees, our teachers, librarians, counselors, nurses, and diagnosticians. Over the years, our district has moved our counselors, librarians, and diags to the administrative professional pay scales, which are all above the state minimum as well as the teacher pay scale. This upcoming year, nurses would also move to the administrative professional pay grade. This is important so that as we discuss the various examples, we know which groups are being impacted. For the 22-23 school year, the teacher's schedule in Duncanville ISD is only for teachers. And so as we look at the examples, I'll refer to that. Next slide. Okay, so looking at our first example of a teacher with the recommended increase of 6.6 from the midpoint with any adjustments. This would be a teacher who is in our district this year, who started the year with us with zero years of experience. Their annual salary for the current school year is $53,000. With a 6.6% from the midpoint, that teacher would receive a raise of $4,000, making their annual salary $57,000. So we take that $57,000, and at the end of this year, that teacher would already have one year of experience. So they would qualify for a market adjustment. And that market adjustment would get us to what their new salary would be for the 2022-2023 school year. And you'll notice that as we look at the various examples, there's no amount on the market adjustment. And that is intentional because it varies by employee, based on their years of experience in the district and in, as far as pay equity is concerned, within their pay grade. Next slide. So we'll also look at a teacher with 10 years of experience. A teacher with 10 years of experience this year, if they started in Duncanville ISD, makes $55,500. With that 6% increase from the midpoint, they too would receive a $4,000 increase, making their annual salary $59,500. This teacher at the end of this year would have 11 years of experience, and so they too would qualify for a market adjustment, bringing us to their new annual salary for the 22-23 school year. Next slide. And we're all aware that it takes everyone in Duncanville ISD to engage, equip, and empower our students. Our auxiliary and support staff are very critical to this work. So the next few examples will give us a glimpse into the impact that a 4% increase from the midpoint would have on these groups. All right, so we'll, our first example will be a bus driver. A bus driver who came to Duncanville ISD this school year. Their starting hourly rate was $17.72. With a 4% increase of the midpoint of their new pay grade, that would increase their hourly rate to $18.60. So at the end of this year, that bus driver would have a year of experience in Duncanville and qualify for a market adjustment, bringing us to their new hourly rate. And the market adjustment piece, as we look at increases, is very important to us because that's how we keep equity within our pay grade and also how we ensure that our employees who are already here are receiving adjustments to keep them competitive with employees that are coming in. Next slide. And now a bus driver example of someone who started with us this year who has 10 years of experience. Their hourly rate would be $18.88. With their 4% increase from the midpoint, their hourly rate would increase to $19.76. At the end of this year, that bus driver would have 11 years of experience, qualify for a market adjustment, which would give us their new hourly rate. Next slide. Okay. All right, and our final example, as it relates to auxiliary employees, would be a groundskeeper who joined us this year, new, with zero years of experience. Their hourly rate was $12.10. The 4% increase from the midpoint would bring them to $12.71. At the end of this year, that groundskeeper would have one year of experience, qualify for a market adjustment, and that would give us their new hourly rate. Next slide. And then a groundskeeper starting with us, bringing 10 years of experience for the current school year, is at $13.33. Their 4% increase from the midpoint would bring them to $13.93. And at the end of this year, they'd have 11 years of experience, qualify for the market adjustment, and that is how their new hourly rate would be calculated. Next slide. So not only is our goal to become more competitive related to pay, we plan to continue to lead the way related to incentives and stipends that are currently offered in the district. So this chart shows some of the stipends we offer for hard-to-fill areas in the district. During the 21-22 school year, you also extended signing bonuses and matching stipends for many of our auxiliary areas, that included our bus drivers, our attendants, custodians, grounds, food service assistants. And so it is imperative that we look at total compensation when we look at, look at salaries of our employees in the district. Total and, total compensation also includes the stipends as well as benefits contribution. Those stipends are part of being TRS-eligible pay for our employees, which is very important to our staff. So if we'll take a look at a few of the incentives that we have here. Our largest incentive, we lead the state in a bilingual stipend. Our stipend is $7,000 for a certified bilingual teacher. That stipend is paid over two years. So they receive $3,500 the first year, $3,500 the second year. And in addition to that signing bonus, the bilingual teacher would receive a $5,000 annual stipend. And so we are definitely leading the way as it relates to that in our, in our TASB study and in our area. The other stipends that, and incentives that you see listed here, we have signing bonuses for several hard-to-fill areas, special education, mathematics, foreign language, secondary science, CTE positions. In this 21-22 school year, we also added three additional one, four additional signing bonuses for our end-of-course content areas to include English 1, English 2, and US History. And so we were very glad to see employees wanting to teach in those EOC areas as those signing bonuses were, became a part of that plan. Also, you'll see that the annual stipends that are listed there as well, with the difference being in CTE, those are for our computer sciences and our health sciences, health science classes where that annual stipend is included. Okay, next slide. So we'll take a look at what it means when we talk about total compensation when we're looking at an employee and they get a stipend or a signing bonus and they're joining the Duncanville ISD family. So this example is a new secondary math teacher in Duncanville ISD. If our teacher's salary schedule increased to start at $57,000, that teacher would receive $57,000 for their annual salary. They'd receive a $2,000 signing bonus in their first year. They'd also receive that $3,500 annual stipend, bringing their first year pay, just fresh out of certification coming to us, to $62,500, which would be very competitive. So that also doesn't include the benefits piece as well. Next slide. All right, if we take a look at a bilingual teacher joining the Duncanville ISD team, that teacher would start at $57,000 in year one. They'd receive the first half of their signing bonus of $3,500, their annual stipend of $5,000, bringing their total salary for year one to $65,500, and that would be the same over year one and year two with the second half of their signing bonus. Okay, next slide. All right. So despite, some, some of the times, despite what we hear, we have many employees who have stayed the course and remain loyal to Duncanville ISD over the years. And so this next piece that we are recommending is that employees who have stayed with Duncanville ISD for 15 years or more also receive what we're calling a loyalty stipend. So that loyalty stipend would have employees who, at the end of the current school year, have 15 years or more experience in Duncanville ISD, they'd receive an additional $2,000 annual stipend that would also be part of their total compensation and be TRS-eligible. And so we did look at the most recent survey that we had of our, for our staff members here in the district about the reasons why they choose to stay in Duncanville ISD. And one of it is that they, they trust us. And they trust you to make great decisions as it relates to them and employees, and they've seen you do it time and time again. And so when we pulled the list of employees that would be impacted by this, we looked at the spread. It touches all departments across the board. Most of it is on the instructional side. We have lots of teachers that would be impacted by this. But about 13% of those individuals were in our Nutrition Services Department. Lots of those individuals were in our Custodial Department. And so this would make a huge impact on our staff across the board. Next slide. All right, and so if we look at just a few examples of what that impact could mean for staff members who have 15 years or more of service to Duncanville ISD, we take a current food service assistant that has 30 years of service in Duncanville ISD. That employee currently makes $15.27 an hour. They would receive that 4% from the midpoint increase, increasing their rate to $15.81. Then that employee would also receive that $2,000 loyalty stipend, which would bring their new hourly rate to $17.23 and have a great impact on their overall compensation. Next slide. Okay. Our next example is a current teacher who has 30 years of service in Duncanville ISD, who has a salary of $64,200. They would receive the 6.6% increase of $4,000, making their annual salary $68,200. They also would receive that loyalty stipend, bringing their new annual salary to $70,200. And you see that that exceeds where someone could be hired in the, in the district at this time. Okay. Next slide. All right, and one of the pieces that we're, in addition to all of the, the new hire schedule, the changes in our Compensation Plan, changes to our minimum midpoints and maximums in our pay grade, we're very excited about this because this has never happened that I can recall, is that we are seeing a decrease in our TRS Active Care insurance rates. And so each year, we anticipate insurance going up and up and up. It's what we've all experienced. You've heard our staff members speak tonight about everything going up. And so we're very excited that something is going down a little. So we currently have 1,126 employees in the district who are enrolled in TRS Active Care. And so the majority of our, of our employees take insurance with the district. And so with the new rates that have come out, our employees will see anywhere from a $7 to a $91 decrease in their monthly cost, based on which plan that they take. And, but also, the district is going to contribute to, contribute the $333 toward the employee's monthly premium, which is outstanding. A lot of districts only contribute the minimum. And so when we're explaining pay to employees and we talk about total compensation, it's important that we factor in all of these pieces. So when you take that $333 and you multiply it by all of the 12 months that we are paying as a district towards an employee's premium, then that also becomes a part of their compensation. So if we look at the example of Active Care, the high deductible plan, which the majority of our employees take, and we look at that yellow line, currently the rate is $420 a month. So with the contribution that the district makes of $333, the out-of-pocket cost to our employees is $96. On next year, if you're employee-only, that will change to $422. The district will continue to contribute $333, making the employee cost $89. So for that employee would be a difference of $7. We currently have 425 employees who are participating in this high deductible plan. And then the chart just goes to show, show other areas. And so this is only one plan. So we have multiple plans, and they will increase all the way up to an employee saving $91 for the employee and family. Okay? All right. I will now turn it over to Dr. Bigby to talk about the cost of the plan.
Mr. President, that's hard to say. Board of Trustees, Dr. Smith, it's always amazing, I get the fun part of this, but that comes with the territory. The cost for the salary increase with benefits is going to be in the area of $5.9 million. The cost of loyalty stipends with benefits, about $600,000. That's $6.5 million annually. So it's an ongoing cost. It's not just this year, but those, those will stay with us and continue on. It's not just this year, but those will stay with us and continue on for the next few years. Now, how do we pay for it? Next slide, please. And next year's ESER budget, and we've talked about it here often, about the investment in human capital. We had four million dollars set aside next year for salary increases out of the ESER funds. This year, after the one-time payment, we've budgeted a little more than what we actually had to use, one, because we didn't have as many employees qualify. So there's six hundred and forty thousand dollars left in that fund. We budgeted one point five million dollars for tutors and couldn't hire any tutors. So that money's still in this year's ESER plan. Stipends, we covered the transportation stipends and some other stipends out of ESER funds. There was twenty-five thousand dollars left in that fund. And in the supply fund, there's three hundred and twenty thousand left in this year's ESER. All of them below the top line are things that would be coming out of the ESER funds that we had budgeted this year. They won't come out of anything that we've budgeted the next two years toward improving instruction or trying to catch our kids up. It's just areas that happened to fall out this year that we won't have next year, but we do have this year. So that totals to six point five million that we can cover out of ESER funds without covering anything out of fund balance. Dr. Smith and I talked it over, and we feel like, and I hope you will too, that we're better keeping our fund balance dollars and fund balance since you can spend those any way that you choose, and the ESER funds have to be spent within a contained area of what the program says. These are all legitimate costs within ESER. We can use part of it. We contribute to trying to keep employees employed, which is also a step toward improving instruction by keeping our employees here and rather than going other places. So the funding of this year's salary increase that we're asking for, our salary compensation plan, will come totally out of ESER funds. Be happy to try to answer any questions. I know that came a little bit from left field since we've been talking about fund balance in a lot of this. Dr. Harvey.
I have a question about the loyalty stipend. Is that going to work in the same way that the last stipends work, the ESER funds, in that it doesn't count towards retirement?
No, it'll be paid out monthly, just like any other stipend, and it will count toward
So this stipend is different in that they get the benefit of it?
It's not a one-time thing. It's a stipend for the entire year.
Oh, wow, that's great.
So it will count for their TRS.
That's great. Thank you.
And that will be the two thousand every year?
Yes.
Every year? Okay, I've got another question. In former presentations, you've given us examples of budget scenario, A, B, and then models one, two. How does this fit into, you know how you've done the thirty-three percent, ninety percent? How does that build into this one?
Because we had budgeted the four million for next year already to go into salaries, and the one point five million for tutoring to go into salaries this year, there's very little effect at all in it. It may change it by half a percent.
Half, so?
We're still on track to do what we've been talking to you about as far as.
Okay, so elementary teachers, secondary teachers, they can expect to go on with their plans, that they continue on? Okay, thank you.
This doesn't change the planning for ESER two, which is next year, and then the other half, extra three, which is another year out.
Thank you, Dr. Bigby.
By the way, I'll tell you on insurance, I sat up here for three months preparing you for a high insurance adjustment, and then all of a sudden we come up here and tell you, ah, it's less. Well, it is an election year, and the governor chose to put five hundred million dollars into TRS active care, and that's why the rates went down, and there was not an escalation of the rates. So we're probably not going to have that next year. I'll warn you now for next year, but it's great that we have it this year. It helps our people, particularly in the times that we're in right now. Just to let you know, that's where that funding came from. Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Bigby. Next slide. So just to recap, the highlights for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three recommended compensation plan. Our starting teacher, our beginning teacher's salary would be fifty-seven thousand dollars. There would be a six point six percent salary increase from the midpoint for all teachers, which would equate to a minimum of four thousand dollars. A four percent salary increase of the midpoint for all other staff. That two thousand dollar loyalty stipend for staff members who have fifteen or more years at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and that stipend would continue, that employee would continue to receive that stipend until they're no longer employed in Duncanville ISD. The additional stipends and sign-in bonuses for hard-to-fill positions, all market adjustments that staff members qualify for, and then the awesome decrease in the health insurance premiums, and the district will continue to contribute the three hundred and thirty-three dollars. So, next slide. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions or entertain any comments that you have.
Thank you, Kathleen. I wanted to, let me go back. I know this was stated, but it's worth just making sure we clarify on that two thousand dollar loyalty stipend. As you stated, that is every year that they're in Duncanville ISD, and that is in addition to any raise that we give moving forward.
Absolutely. The two thousand dollars, so any year that the board decides that we're giving a raise, that employee would receive that raise plus that two thousand dollars. Years ago, we had a stipend that was similar to that, like there was a pre-differential stipend, so I equate it to being very similar to that, that it stays with that employee. It stays on their profile with the district as a part of their total compensation until they're no longer employed in the district.
I have a question. And that fifteenth year starts this year?
Well, what we're, what we're.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
It's for if you have twenty-one, fifteen years at the end of this year.
At the end of this year?
At the end of this year. And so that's for everyone who has it from at this point backwards. And so if that was something that was considered later for other years, it would have to be considered. So this is as of right now. You have to have the fifteen years at the end of this year to qualify.
Okay, and it doesn't start over next year for those fifteenth years? Okay, this is a big one-time.
It is.
A big deal.
It is for those employees who've stayed and been loyal to Duncanville ISD for fifteen or more years, and which is a good chunk of employees for us.
It sure is.
I commend y'all for really taking the pencil to this and really looking at this and coming up with this program. And I know you three had your heads together a lot, and I appreciate that very much.
Yes, ma'am. Our pleasure.
I like the fact that it's any employee that's been in the district fifteen years or more. It's not teachers that have been in the district for fifteen years or more. That it's any employee that has been loyal to the district and has been here for fifteen consecutive years.
And when we say consecutive, we actually bridge our, bridge staff members' years in Duncanville. So for our employee appreciation event, if you left us briefly and you came back, we bridge your service. And so at this point, if you have fifteen years of service in Duncanville ISD at the end of this year, because we have people who leave for one year, and they think, oh, the grass is greener, and then they say, oh, nope, I'm coming right back home. And so that employee benefits because they have fifteen years of service in Duncanville.
So it doesn't have to be consecutive.
Not at this moment, it's not consecutive. It's fifteen total years of service.
Do we know how many employees that is?
We do. I think it was two seventy-nine?
It's two seventy-eight.
Two seventy-eight. Mm-hmm.
That's it for me.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three teaching hiring schedule and compensation plan as presented to include?
President McNeely? I'm just so excited about this plan.
I know. I know.
Absolutely so moved.
Yes, oh, yeah.
I just wanted to say that, well, make the motion that the board approve the twenty-two, twenty-three teacher hiring schedule and compensation plan as presented to include any needed adjustments.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any more questions, comments, or discussions? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Can I vote twice?
Yeah. Passes six, zero. Thank you. We'll move on now to education affiliation agreement with the University of Texas at Arlington for the baccalaureate and graduate nursing. The presenter is, you're up again, Kathleen.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We've been saying a lot of you tonight.
Yes, sir. All right. Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Smith. This evening, I am presenting to you an MOU with the University of Texas at Arlington for the baccalaureate and graduate nursing. The University of Texas at Arlington would like to partner with Duncanville ISD to provide field experiences for students in their college of nursing. The students will work under the direction of a school nurse for a designated period of time to gain experiences as they prepare for their future in the field. This partnership would allow Duncanville ISD to serve as an affiliation site for students enrolled at UTA, and will also provide an avenue for us to recruit school nurses for the district. And so it is our recommendation to enter into the agreement with the University of Texas at Arlington School of Nurses, and Nursing, excuse me, and this is recommended as a way to provide opportunities for students seeking to become school nurses, and the MOU would be in effect until either party terminates the agreement in writing. And nursing has been a very hard-to-fill area for us, and so we are very excited about the possibility of this partnership.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the affiliation agreement with the University of Texas at Arlington for the baccalaureate and graduate nursing program?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carla, second by Janice. Any other questions, comments, or discussions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same. Motion passed six, oh. We'll now move on to the, which one did we move? Okay, move on to the City of Dallas Water Utilities Temporary Easement. Presenter is Andrea Fields.
Good afternoon, President McNeely, board members, and waiting audience. Tonight, I'm back to present to you some additional information regarding requests from the City of Dallas for the temporary easement for the one hundred and twenty by ninety-six square feet water line. Board, if you recall, in March, I presented to you this same request from the City of Dallas, and tonight, I am very delighted to present to you the request that was brought back to the city at your request. We used our legal counsel to assist us, and so tonight, we are asking for your approval with the sum for this same temporary easement for forty-five thousand dollars. What you will recall, in March, we were only offered twelve thousand seven hundred and two dollars, so there's a difference of thirty-two thousand dollars. We almost tripled what we did. So we thank you for your wise counsel, your asking us to table it, and then to move back and to have negotiations with the City of Dallas. So in line with our operational excellence strategic goal five, we're asking for your approval tonight.
I'd just like to say thank you, Jackie Colton, for your expertise and your counseling on this. Thanks for explaining it to me.
It helps to know people in high places.
Thank you, Jackie.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the granting of a temporary easement to the City of Dallas in order to move forward with the ongoing Southwest twenty slash ninety-six inch water transmission pipeline project with the total sum, for the total sum of forty-five thousand dollars for the property?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jackie Colton, and second by Cassandra. Okay. Any more questions, discussions, or comments? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same. Pass six, oh.
Thank you, board.
Okay. Duncanville and Tarleton State University MOU, Dr. Jordan.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Smith. I am excited to share with you a partnership opportunity with Tarleton State University. Tarleton State University will grant automatic admission and guarantee scholarship levels to all Duncanville ISD students who graduate within the top twenty-five percent of their respective classes. In addition, Tarleton State University will waive the requirement that such students submit scores from the ACT, which is the American College Test, or the SAT, the Scholastic Aptitude Test, to be considered for admission. We have two Tarleton State University staff members here with us today, Dr. Javier Garza, he's the Vice President of Enrollment Management, and Dr. Sherry Ben, who's the Vice President of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. We recommend to approve the MOU with Tarleton State University as a way to provide greater access and opportunity for our top graduates of Duncanville ISD.
Do I have a motion to approve the Tarleton State University partnership with Duncanville Independent School District?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Cassandra, second by Jackie. Any more questions, comments, or discussions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Six, oh, passes. Now, we're gonna move on to nominating a candidate for the TASB Board of Directors. Please, representative from Tarleton, say a few words to us.
Yes. We didn't want you to come this far or not.
Yeah, we wanted to put you on the spot.
Well, thank you so much to the distinguished members of the board, President, and to Superintendent Dr. Smith. Thank you so much for this opportunity that you've provided for us to just, to come and to share our excitement about the potential for this partnership. We have a program, this program is called our Distinguished High School Partnership, and due to your leadership, to your innovation, to your centering of student success, we know that this partnership will be very fruitful because it will honor the efforts of your educators, your leaders, as well as the hard work of your students. So we're just really excited about being able to collaborate and partner to invest in the future of your students, which will be our students as well, is the hope. But all of the students of Texas are our students. We all have a collective responsibility for investing in their success, in their future, in their viability in terms of opportunities for their professions and just making a difference in their communities and in their families. So we are just delighted. You all are doing some outstanding, outstanding things here in this ISD, in Duncanville ISD. I was particularly impressed by that presentation that you gave and the fact that you recognize how important the work is of our secondary educators, that they are professionals, and that they are investing their times and their lives into a calling of commitment to our students. So thank you so much, and we are just really excited about embarking upon this new adventure and this new journey with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we'll move on. Action item G, nominating a candidate for the TASB Board of Directors, Region Ten, Position B. Dr. Smith?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So each year, the board selects a member to represent the board and the Region Ten, and this year, in Position B, which is currently held by a school board member in Sunnyvale ISD, we are asking for the board to nominate an individual to serve in that capacity. Basically, this is an opportunity for us to have a seat at the table at the state level so that we have our voice heard here in Duncanville, so that we have an opportunity to have the good things about Duncanville being shared with state leaders, and really, we are at the forefront in making some key decisions.
And really, we are at the forefront in making some key decisions. So this is an opportunity for us, Board, to select someone who we can rally and get behind and support. The next steps after you select, by July 3, a list of all the candidates running for the position will be posted on the TASB website, and then the nominations will begin, and the winner will be notified. And we certainly feel like we have some strong representation. So I'll pass it over to, back to you, Ms. President, so you all can make a vote.
Okay. Duncanville ISD Board of Trustees wishes to nominate Dr. Ivory as our TASB Board of Directors, Region 10, Position B candidate. I think she'll make a, with her expertise, she'll make a great member and represent us well.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, I gotta have a first.
Well, I thought you were...
I thought you just made it.
I just made it then, okay. I can do that. I'll just, okay. It's been made, motion been made and seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six oh. Now, we'll move on to the information discussion items. The first item is the Student Ridership and Routing System. Presenter is Brad Hammerick.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Smith. It's my pleasure to stand before you this evening to just restate some of the capabilities of, from my presentation last month and the need for doing so and to answer any additional questions that y'all might have. The next slide, please. Updating and expanding this system will allow us to communicate transparently with our constituents. It will afford them live updates of bus changes, stop time changes, if there's issues with the bus through a parent app, and the parents will have full access to their scholar and their scholar's information. That includes when and where they get off the bus. Software is compatible with Skyward and other district initiatives and software. So the ID badges that will be issued to the scholars will also work with this child nutrition. As far as them going through the lunch line, it'll have a barcode on that, so it will do that. Moving the system to the cloud will free up IT time, free up server space. And it will also allow us to, it will allow us to have access to that information on any device. So if I'm at home and I need to know where a bus is at, or we get a call about a bus, I can actually call and see where it's at, or I can pull it up on my phone and see where it's at and that kind of stuff. Live GPS on all vehicles, and when I say live, I mean live. It's, you can click on the map and you can follow it second by second. I was talking with a gentleman a while ago, and it's down, it's lane specific. It's gonna get you right where it's at, where now, you know, we've got an area that we have to, it's in the vicinity of. It will also decrease operational cost and increase customer satisfaction as far as transportation goes. One of the questions that has come up, and one of the things we've been discussing, is what would we do if a scholar doesn't have a badge? If they forgot their badge at home, or if they're new to the district, they enrolled today, that information's not gonna come to us until tomorrow. So basically, what we would do, and what the system is capable of doing, the drivers can look up that scholar's information on the tablet that's mounted in the bus. So either by ID number or by name. So that information is right there. If by chance they can't find that scholar in their tablet, or it's not their bus, that scholar doesn't belong on their bus, then they would, of course, call into dispatch, just like they do now, and get that scholar's routing information and then put them on the appropriate bus. If a scholar is new to the district, the app has the capability of allowing the parent to actually register that child for transportation at that time. So once they're enrolled in the district, they gain access to the app through their student ID number. They register their scholar for transportation, and their routing information pops up on the app immediately. So they don't have to wait till the next day like they do now, or sometimes two or three days before they actually get routed, just depending on the time of year and the number of scholars that we have coming into the district. Next slide, please. Districts in North Texas that are using this system, Denton ISD has been using it for some time. They've been partners with Edgelog for a number of years, and they actually started piloting this program a couple of years before COVID. So they've been, they've been using it for a while. Mansfield ISD has been on, has been an Edgelog user for a number of years, actually dating back prior to 2014. Just a little farther south, Colleen ISD and Hayes Consolidated are using this system. KD ISD is by far the largest district in the state that uses this, and their testimonial is well documented on YouTube. And then Clear Creek is the newest one in the state, one of the newest ones in the state, and they're within a couple of months of getting this off the ground in Clear Creek. Next slide, please. Last month, I went over the cost. It is gonna, it's 231, a little over $231,000 with a $90,000 annual recurring cost. That's gonna require an additional $29,000 added to the transportation budget to cover that, to cover that piece. Again, I wanna go over the operational advantages, moving the software to the cloud, frees up space, server space, and IT time. When we come in in the mornings, if the server is down, or if something has happened, it's been reset, there's nobody in technology to restart that system at 4:30 or 5 o'clock in the morning. So with it being on the cloud, we have access to that immediately. It will eliminate return trips for scholars that miss the bus, whether that is due to of the bus being late, bus breaking down, those kind of things. And it return, and it maximizes in-classroom time because we're not having to go back and pick up the stock scholars that we've, that have missed the bus. The tablets offer turn-by-turn directions. So in the mornings, when I'm driving around, it's dark, driving around with turn-by-turn directions on several sheets of paper and fumbling through sheets of paper, trying to navigate in narrow streets, parked cars, I mean, kids standing on the edge, you know, standing at the edge, because they know where the bus is at. They know where they're supposed to be, but as a sub-driver, I don't know where the, you know, how far from the corner are they? So, you know, just being able to look out for those things that we need to look out for, reducing risk of accidents and eliminating missed stops because you don't know exactly where the stops are at. It's really easy to get lost on a sheet of paper when you're fumbling through 15 or 20 stops, so. Daily counts, riders badging on and off gives us an idea of how many kids ride every day. It's just like average daily attendance in the classroom. We know how many kids are riding and what buses they're riding, so we can combine routes. We may, you know, disperse routes so that we can get maximum ridership, run in the least amount of miles. Again, it offers transparent communication. Campuses are gonna know what we're doing. They're gonna know where their buses are at. Parents are gonna know where their kids are at. And that, just that transparent communication, that's a big part of what we do. That's the main thing that, that's the main thing that we do do. Student safety and security, that's the key. Knowing where your kids are at offers a peace of mind that I think we can all relate to, just having that understanding. I do have a gentleman from Samsara here with me this evening, Mr. Eric Fryerson. Did I say that right? Okay. We'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have prior to moving forward with this project.
What do we get for the $90,000 every year? What?
The $90,000 every year, that's all the technical support.
Provided by?
Provided by Edgelog and Samsara. It's, and there's a breakdown in the, in the original piece, I don't have it with me, as far as the breakdown of the cost. Basically, it includes technical support for everything except the badges. The badges will be the only cost that is not added into that.
So every kid's gonna have a badge?
Yes, sir. We will take care of the kids that are registered to ride initially and get that, get that in. And then, as we go through the year, then we'll, then we'll issue badges for every scholar. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So that will be a different badge than their lunch? I mean,
No.
It'll be all the same badge?
Yes, ma'am.
And only, only parents have access to their own child's information?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Or anybody, you know, if anybody, they give, they give access to a grandparent, then that's...
But it has to be through the parent's permission?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know how many school districts in the state, besides the ones you listed? Is there, is that the, all on the list? Is that the only ones that's...
Uh, no, that's just the major ones in the state. I can get, I can get a complete list of those in the state.
Well, I don't wanna list. I just wanna, is it a hundred, 200?
Uh, that's using Edgelog, I would say probably in the, in 100, 100 or so. I think we'd be safe in going with that.
Don't go back.
Okay.
Any other? Jackie?
Mr. Hammerick, what is our current ridership?
Our current ridership this year, between the two counts that we've done, the initial count in the fall was right at 4,000 students. The one we just did last month was 3,800 students.
And what you're saying with this new system, we can do that daily?
Yes, ma'am.
Or probably eight times a day?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we'll get a morning count and an afternoon count
Wow.
for every tier. You know, we'll have one for high school, elementary, intermediate, and middle school every day. Yes, ma'am.
Jackie?
So I have another question. So if there is an accident which impacts the route, then the driver would be able to receive updated information?
Okay, the scholars will be able to, or the parents will be able to receive updated route information. The technology also affords us the capability of pushing notifications to parents. So if the bus is involved in an accident, you know, we have that capability where we can, we can push control, you know, we have control over the message that goes to the parents.
Heaven forbid, no accidents.
Right.
No, I mean, if we should encounter an accident which would impact our route? Or if, you know, the street is being repaired and we need to have, you know, an alternate pickup, the driver would be able to receive that information?
Yes, ma'am.
And the parents?
Yes, ma'am. So when, when changes are made, whether it's a stop location change, so if the route coordinator's in the office and she's, and she's making route changes based on information received, you know, the street closures or whatever, that information is automatically updated live in the system because everything is based on, is cellular-based. So that information goes to the tablets, and then from, and from there, it goes out to the constituents, to the parents and the scholars. Yes, ma'am.
So under our current system, how would those kind of changes be handled?
Requires a lot of work, because you, because number one, we don't, we don't have registered, we have registered riders, but looking up each scholar's information. So I'd have to go scholar by scholar, stop by stop, and look all of them up, make the phone calls or send out an email. And that way, we could use the system that, that they use for the schools for mass notifications, but by the time we got all of that narrowed down to just that few kids that was gonna be affected, we would already be through and on with, on past those routes that are, that are impacted.
So I guess we're looking at greater efficiency?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions? Thank you, Brad.
Thank y'all.
Move on to discussion item B, Lunch Pricing Increases. Presenter is Donna Woodward-Thomas.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, and the School Board, and Dr. Smith, I'm sorry. It has, it always brings me pleasure to present to you the ever-changing program of child nutrition. What I'd like to do tonight is to share with you the need to increase meal prices. Next slide, please. Currently, our meal prices for our students for breakfast, all of the students eat free throughout the district. Our current lunch prices for students that are not eligible for free or reduced meals is $3. What I am recommending tonight is that we increase the lunch meal prices for paid students to $3.50. Our adult meal prices currently for breakfast is $2.25, and the lunch is $4. What I am recommending is that our breakfast increase for adults to $2.50, and the lunch increase to $4.25. Next slide. Basically, we have had, as most of you know, we've had a continuous increase in everything across the United States. Our meal prices have remained the same for the past four years. The supply chain issues are causing us, the prices to continue to rise on our food costs. The fuel cost has gone up. And then there are regulations or standards that we have to abide by with the USDA. Now, one example I would like to share with you tonight, one of the entrees that we serve and the students love, it's an Asian dish. It's called sweet and sour chicken. At the beginning of the school year, the price was $88, and now we're paying $128.88. Now, at the beginning of the school year, our milk cost per student, it was about, well, this year alone, our milk cost per carton has gone up three times. So there is a great need for us to move forward and look at changing the prices for our meals. Are there any questions?
Dr. Ivory?
I would just like to know why we went up 50 cent for the students and 25 for the adults. What's the rationale behind that?
Well, the rationale is that there is a formula that, that we have to follow with USDA. And one of the things that, two years ago during the pandemic, we were considering going up on the prices, but it was not a good time to do that because so many families lost their jobs. So because of that, we have to kind of catch up with where we need to be. So that's the reason why our prices has not gone up for our students for the last four years.
So what would it take to, I mean, is it possible, I don't know what the formula is and what strategies you use, but is it possible to increase maybe the adult meal, but it's fewer adults than it are children, so that wouldn't work either?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, what is the average number of students who buy their lunch, who are not on free and reduced lunch on a daily basis, average number?
On the average, we feed about 9,000 students for lunch, and approximately between nine and 1,000 students, they are full pay. So we're only looking at a small number of students. The majority of our students are either free or reduced.
And I've heard this ugly rumor that kids are made to take milk, and milk is just piled up at the end of the day in the trash cans. Is that a big ugly rumor about milk cartons?
Well, I will say that this year, I have talked with principals, and we've also posted information at the register for students to see that it is a requirement that we serve milk, but it is not a requirement that they take milk. And so we, we share that with the principals as well as the teachers, that students don't have to take milk. It just has to be a part of the meal.
Thank you for clearing that up. I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Jackie?
Thank you very much, you know, for how you all serve our students and how you, you know, continue to serve them, even when school's not, you know, in. I have a question regarding the reduced cost, or the students who have to, I guess they pay a partial cost for the, for their lunch?
They do. Their cost is 40 cents.
Okay, and that will not change?
Well, it will not change. USDA makes that determination, and it has not changed for the last 10 years for reduced students.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And move on to information discussion item C, summer program update. Dr. Jordan?
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Smith. I am excited to share with you a summer learning opportunities update. So we have really been focused on reimagining summer for our students, getting them back in the swing, of coming back and learning, and really wanting Duncanville ISD to be a place where they love to be, so much so that they are with us during the summer. So our theme this year for summer school is we are making summer epic. Next slide, please. So our epic summer, our whole goal is to reimagine. We're going to focus on making sure that we are thinking outside of the box, designing programs that are at the interest of our students, making sure that students are happy, feel safe, and feel loved, and then we are providing individualized instruction and support to all students. Next slide. So the E, I know you all know me by now, that everything I say has some type of acronym, right? So the E in epic is for enrichment. We will be providing enrichment opportunities for grades K through 8. This is really to attract our students in, so much so that they think that they're having fun, but they're learning while they're having fun. So we have next level gaming. We know that our kiddos love to be in front of a video game. We have something called Bash'em Bots, so think about those Hot Wheel cars and where they can crash them together. Marvel's or Marvelous, working in a STEM camp, Gear Up, or even working through Pokemon Master Engineering. So many different opportunities for our students for enrichment. Next slide. The P stands for post-secondary readiness and advanced academic camps. And so we wanna make sure that we're providing intervention supports, but also pushing our students who are high achievers and need additional support in the summer. So we have many bridge programs that we will be providing, CTE programs, whether it's the industry-based certificates that we heard earlier from Dallas College. We have a huge cosmetology program going on. It's the Braiding Palooza, where kiddos will be coming up and learning a lot about braiding. And then we have advanced academic camps, PSAT, SAT Bootcamp, and then a Collegiate Academy Summer Bridge. Next slide. The I in epic stands for individualized academic support. This is where the majority of our students will be. We are focused on four main areas, accelerated instruction. This is the opportunity for our students who have House Bill 45, 45 hours, where they have required interventions that are needed. We can provide that to them throughout the summer so that during the school year, we can focus on tier-one instruction. So accelerated instruction, we have opportunities for third and fourth grade, fifth and eighth grade, and ninth and 11th grades. Those are critical years for our students, and we wanna make sure that we fill in the gaps. We also have pre-K and K bilingual and general education programs focused in on literacy, math, science. Those students are our foundation, so we want to make sure that they start the school year strong and ready. Then we have primary support for first and second grade, where we are focusing in on reading and math. We think about our first and second graders during COVID, they were not in school. So we wanna make sure that we can overcome that learning loss and close those gaps and deficits by having them with us this summer. And then we have extended school year, which is focused on our individualized instructions for our special needs students. We will be focused on reading, math, and social skills. Next slide, please. The C is for credit recovery and accelerated instructions, instruction. Our students were away from home, and so some of them have some credit that they need to recover, or actually have some type of failure recoup. And so we will offer credit recovery at the high school for our middle school students, all the way up through our high school students, for reading, math, science, and social studies. And then we have students who are excelling, and they're like, we love school so much, we wanna finish maybe early. So we have the credit acceleration for our ninth and 11th graders. That way, they can earn two full credits in the summer if they would like. Next slide, please. So we are super excited about epic summer learning in Duncanville ISD. We launched our enrollment May 9th, and our enrichment programs filled up on the very first day. So parents and students are so excited to have these opportunities that we're looking at additional spots so we take on more students. But our enrollment is booming, which shows that kids are wanting to be with us, and parents are trusting us with their students. So super excited about that. Next slide, please. In addition to spending time with our students, we are also focused on our staff. And so we are hosting our first professional learning conference. It's called Duncanville U. It will be June 15th through 16th at Duncanville High School. This is optional and voluntary for our staff. We will have sessions for all staff. We'll have internal and external presenters. But just as our students, we're increasing their toolbox, we wanna make sure that we are able to provide those opportunities for our teachers to learn based on their interests and their needs as well. Next slide. I am happy to answer any questions or hear any comments that you have at this time.
Dr. Ivory?
In the summer school, in the credit recovery part, are our, or is attendance a part of the, did we address the students that were lacking in attendance? Are they required to come, or is there a special invitation for those who need to make a seat time?
So the campus will determine the attendance requirements, and so there will be a spot for them in that credit recovery for them.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Jordan.
Thank you.
Any comment, or any, um, from communications, from citizens? Okay. Being that there's no further items to discuss, and the meeting is now adjourned.